2023. Let the record show the meeting started promptly at 5:31 PM pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, Section 20, until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491P, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as is possible. Good evening, everyone. Our first item this evening is to establish a quorum. Mr. Metters?
Present.
Mr. Shell?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Ms. Nacastro?
Present.
And the Chair is present as well. The next item on our agenda are public announcements and/or agenda item requests, and that's both from the Select Board and from our public. Any Select Board announcements and/or agenda item requests? Anybody here that's here physically present and/or online? I see no hands raised online and no hands raised here. Okay, move on to our main item. We have one item on our agenda this evening, which is a public hearing. Do men general bylaw, Chapter 100, airport approach protection, Section 4, no obstructions permitted. Just a brief comment, and I'll turf it over to Mr. Shell to read. Why don't you read the public notice, Mr. Shell, and then I have a brief comment.
Okay. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 90, Section 40(c) on Tuesday, April 25, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the large meeting room of the Town Office Annex 261, George Rider Road, to consider amending general bylaw, Chapter 100, Airport Approach Protection, Section 4, no obstructions permitted. Proposed amendments may be reviewed in Article 44 of the 2023 Annual Town Meeting warrant posted to the town's website and the Chatham website is cited there under Town Meeting Central. All interested parties are encouraged to participate.
Thank you, Clerk Shell. Just a brief comment. This hearing is prompted by citizens' petition by the Rallen Munson and company, and a response by a member of our board, most particularly Mr. Shell, who suggested we have a bylaw change, and hopefully we could get some good results therefrom. And so this evening, we're going to hear from the public and from the board as well, and hopefully we can have a great hearing. Just some cleanup here, not cleanup, but advice, three to five minutes at the podium if you want to speak. I'll recognize you in three to five minutes, no more than five, okay? And then I'm going to turf it off to Terry, who's going to give us a brief introduction, and then off to Mr. Shell.
Thank you, and just for some context... No, no, I apologize. Sorry with the microphone. So again, I'm going to turn it off to Select Board Member Shell very quickly here. But again, just we're going to just have a couple of navigational slides here to, you know, where we are in the hearing and the actual proposed action. And with that, I'll defer to Select Board Member.
Okay, Mr. Shell.
Thank you.
Off and running. Thank you, Mr. Shell.
Hopefully running and not stumbling. So just to elaborate a little bit on what the Chair recited, there was a citizen petitioned article that was submitted, if my memory is correct, back in February. The Select Board received an opinion with respect to that, which basically said that without an administrative mechanism to use the money, if it were properly appropriated by Town Meeting, the petitioned article, even if it passed, would not be able to function in the fashion that it was intended to function, namely, to make sure that there was at least $200,000 available out of town funds, free cash, to pay for any identification of trees that might need to be removed and the actual removal of those trees. The Select Board considered that. You may recall the meeting, I think it was the 7th of March, primarily with Mr. Nacastro's help, we put together a proposed bylaw amendment, and the sole purpose of that bylaw amendment, Section D of Chapter 100, Section 4, I think it is, was to create the mechanism whereby if both of them passed, the petitioned article passed by Town Meeting and the bylaw amendment passed by Town Meeting, the Airport Commission would be able, they wouldn't be mandated, but they would be able to use the funds to execute the plan of obstruction removal, which has been on the table for some time. There are statutory requirements that the Airport Commission will have to comply with, even if they utilize the bylaw amendment to spend the money, again, assuming that it's authorized. But the main point here is to be able to have access to the $200,000 of free cash to accomplish this purpose whenever it gets, I'll say, organized. There have been conversations, I believe there are a total of 21 properties that are in question here. Some of them are town-owned or otherwise subject to easements that probably make this somewhat of an irrelevancy, but there are a number of properties for which this is the main event, if you will. So that was the purpose. Both the petitioned article and the bylaw that is the subject of this hearing were passed unanimously, not only by this board, but also recommended unanimously. The vote, I think, was seven to nothing by the Finance Committee, and in the bargain, the Airport Commission, I think they announced their position in support of these via a letter to the Chronicle. So basically, everybody seems to be on the same page. And I still recall a remark by Mr. Oppenheim at the meeting where we passed this, that he thought, and frankly, so do I, that this was a kind of a happy confluence of everybody being on the same page. So with that, I will stop and invite questions, comments, or whatever.
Yeah, any of the comments other than Mr. Shell from the Select Board. That's a great summary, obviously. You've done really great work here, and I think it's a wonderful, I agree, it's a wonderful confluence of a citizen's petition coming up with a bylaw solution, I think, that really meets the needs of everybody. So you've done a great job.
Thank you. If I may, forgive me, I neglected to mention one thing. In preparing for this evening's meeting, I reviewed the text of the bylaw amendment, and I discovered that, as one of my clients used to say, an error crept in. The language that's in the packet for this evening's meeting, as well as in the warrant, is language that was originally on the table when the Select Board was discussing this. I had had several conversations with members of the public who had expressed concern, suggestions, and the like, as a result of which I put up that evening some proposed amendments that I felt would accommodate some of the suggestions I'd had from the public. Terry is that the...
That's the revised language.
The revised language. So this is the language that the board actually passed, and the minutes reflect that. So, thank you. I'm sorry.
Super yet now. Thank you, Mr. Shell. Okay. Mr. Nacastro had his hand up. Mr. Nacastro.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, when Mr. Shell was considering the petition article and whatever response might be appropriate, I suggested a bylaw change would be essential. I think that it's important, what I think the bylaw does is provides a mechanism for the town at the town's expense, the town, through the Airport Commission, at the town's expense, to undertake the tree removal in a manner that is efficient, uniform, cost-effective, and without the need to take avocation easements on those properties that participate in the process. Thank you.
Yeah, great point, Dean. Thank you so much. Anybody else? Okay, the public, anybody from the public would like to comment this evening? Anyone either here physically in or online? I don't see any hands raised online. Jill, do you?
No, now I do, yes. The first one we have is Tom Wilson, followed by Ned.
Okay. Mr. Wilson. Tom Wilson.
Good evening, Chairman Dykens. Could we get clarification from Town Council on the existing Chapter 100 bylaw in terms of Paragraph B, where it says, "The limitations prescribed in this chapter shall be construed to require the removal, lowering, or other change or alteration of any structure or tree not conforming to these regulations as of the effective date thereof, or otherwise interfere with the continuance of any nonconforming use." I'm unclear on what that means. Does it mean that when this amendment was passed, a nonconforming tree is grandfathered and allowed to continue?
Mr. Costello, are you there?
I am. Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chair. That is a fairly typical, shall we call it grandfather clause, that does, in essence, codify the fact that any nonconforming structure that is in existence at the time the bylaw or any amendment thereto is enacted is exempt from application of the bylaw. That provision is entirely consistent with other language in General Law's Chapter 90 to the same effect. So I believe Mr. Wilson's understanding of that particular provision is accurate.
So if I could...
Go ahead, Tom.
How does that, if I could, how does that relate to a homeowner who has a tree that was preexisting back when this bylaw was passed, who doesn't want the tree cut down? Is he exempt from having it cut down?
May, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Pat.
Obviously, trees are not static things. They evolve and change over time. I believe the relevant question would be, when did a particular tree violate the provisions of the regulation of the bylaw? And at that point in time, the revised applications in effect then would apply.
But if the tree predated the bylaw and was in violation before the bylaw, then it would continue to be exempt from the bylaw? Is that correct?
I think it's a matter of degree. I think we'd have to conduct an analysis as to what the nature of the nonconformity is. As with all nonconformities, preexisting nonconformities may be grandfathered, but any change or alteration in the scope or the extent of the nonconformity would have to be taken into account. And I think that's something that the Airport Commission would have to determine upon its review of the facts.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Chair, I did have a couple of other comments, if I could proceed.
Okay, Tom, I just am trying to keep it to five minutes, that's all. Thank you, sir.
All right. Hopefully, it will be shorter than that. But basically, my comment is that in 2020, the Airport Commission passed a master plan and an environmental plan, both of which spoke to the need for tree removal, and both of which spoke to the fact that some of the trees that needed to be removed were actually on the airport. And we are now in 2023, and in their slide presentation from last September, the Airport Commission, when they were talking to homeowners who might have affected trees, the slide mentioned that projects within jurisdictional wetlands would require the filing of a notice of intent with the Chatham Conservation Commission and Cape Cod Commission coordination with jurisdictional areas to be determined. I guess my question is, we're three years down the road. Has a notice of intent with the Chamber of Commerce, Chatham Conservation Commission been filed? And if trees are a safety hazard, why hasn't the airport in a three-year window moved forward with fixing the trees on airport property before stepping outside to private property and looking to address that situation? I would think it would be setting a good example that they have done things in-house that needed to be done to show how important this is. So I'm a little hesitant to enhance a bylaw and give, I think the quote is, "sole and absolute discretion to a non-elected body," when they haven't taken any steps to fix the problems that exist on the airport, and they're looking to expand well outside the airport. Those were my comments.
Okay, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Shell has his hand up and would like to speak. Mr. Shell.
Well, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Wilson. As the drafts person of that sole and absolute discretion, it goes to one decision and one decision alone, and that is whether the Airport Commission decides to undertake the task of identifying trees that are obstructions, and whether it decides to undertake the task of removing those trees as opposed to some other course of action. It is not intended and will not give them any additional authority or discretion or anything else, particularly under the statutory provisions that also govern.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. I have Ned's hand up. Ned?
Do you want to be a minute? Thank you. Can the board hear me?
Yes, barely.
I'll try and turn up the microphone. My apologies. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight concerning the proposal. I think Selectman Shell identified the same issue, so perhaps I'd just explore that a little deeper. The language that was published for tonight included language that I thought had been amended. I was one of those, the people that the Selectman was kind enough to take time with, and I want to recognize and thank him for that. So, Selectman Shell, thank you for that time. But one of those phrases, I believe, you put the language up just briefly this evening, was "properties," quote, "in the vicinity of the Chatham Airport." Is that, in fact, still included or not included?
It is not included. That was part of the phrase, one of the phrases that was eliminated in the proposed amendment, in response to your comments, among others.
Are there others that you might highlight that were changed?
Yeah, I will be happy to do that.
Thank you.
I'm looking at what you can see. The first one is, in the third line, the word "practical difficulties" was formerly "practical necessities." "Difficulties" is a word that's used both in the statute and in other places in Chapter 100. And so we substituted "difficulties" for "necessities." And then in the fifth line, let me just, we eliminated, where you see which constitute an airport hazard as herein defined, airport hazard is defined in Chapter 100. It formally, as you articulated, had said, "located on properties in the vicinity of the Chatham Airport." That gave a number of the homeowners agita, and it really wasn't necessary. And so we just said, we just referred to trees or other vegetation which constitute an airport hazard. And then we added, as herein defined, that term is defined in Chapter 100.
Thank you, Mr. Selectman. I appreciate the clarification, because when the language came out in the board package, obviously, it differed from what you have on the screen. Two other brief comments. One, and Selectman Shell, this may be covered by your reference to state statute, but is there a notice provision or communication with landowners incorporated in this bylaw or elsewhere in the town of Chatham rules or regulations for the Airport Commission?
I will defer definitive comment to Town Council, but I will tell you that the intent here, and I might add more generally, the idea was to create a more hospitable environment for the Airport Commission to work these issues out on a mutually convenient and mutually agreed basis, as opposed to basically quoting chapter and verse of this law, that regulation, or whatever. But it is my belief that this bylaw amendment doesn't relieve the Airport Commission of any of the statutory requirements. And again, I'll just say, I know there is a notice requirement in Section 40(c), I'm sorry, 40(f), but I'll defer to Town Council on that.
And, Mr. Shell, just to be clear, I agree with you on, I appreciate the effort that you described, that it is to create that hospital environment. That said, notice isn't necessarily, to me, a legalistic process. It's communication. Ideally, I think it would be incumbent on the Airport Commission to have an open channel of communication with landowners, and I certainly hope they would live up to that or take that on. But it's not clear from this language that they're obligated to do so or not. And again, I don't envision that having to be adversarial. Just communicate before they enter on people's property to remove trees.
Yeah, I would agree with you. I mean, that's, I think that goes without saying, but...
Yeah, I'm going to call on Huntley Harrison just to address that. Ned, if you might, would you just please identify yourself? I have you as Ned Guest.
Ned Bartlett.
I'm sorry?
The last name is Bartlett, B-A-R-T-L-E-T-T.
Thank you, Ned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry that it doesn't have the name showing.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. The Airport Commission...
The Airport Commission will certainly communicate with the property owners once we know exactly what trees are in question. And we will, after, we're about to find out about funding for an analysis of the properties to determine exactly which trees are in question. And then, once we know, we will, and we'll be contacting the property owners prior to that to let them know that we will be coming to them and find out a mutual time that we can come on their property and make that analysis. And we will be using a drone to do that. Again, like I said, we're waiting for funding for that. I think we're very close. But until then, we won't be really having any communication, other than the public hearing tonight and the annual town meeting. Once we have our funding in place and we know when we can do our analysis, we will let the property owners know, make an appointment, and come, you know, find a mutual time to do that and come on their property and make the measurements and let them know exactly what will have to happen to the obstructions. I think that's the best I can do right now.
Okay, thank you, Huntley. Mr. DeCastro, please.
Huntley?
Huntley.
Thank you. I just had a question. So you're talking about a different funding source from...
FAA.
Okay, it's different from the $200,000...
This is FAA funding for the drone analysis.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Thank you, Huntley.
Yep.
Okay, anybody have their hands up? Mr. Wilson has his hand up again. Tom, I'll recognize you again, times three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have a couple of follow-up questions. Could we get clarification on the phrasing where it says that they may expend funds if they enter on a property? So does that mean that if the Airport Commission comes on your property and does something to trees, that the homeowner will be compensated, or the Airport Commission has the ability, if this amendment is passed, to not cover the costs?
I think if they're going to do work, and I mean, they're going to cover the cost, but I'm not going to speak for either the Airport Commission or Town Council, but certainly the spirit of this bylaw and its genesis speaks to the notion that, you know, if the Airport Commission is going to do work on your property, they're going to pay for it. I don't know, Mr. DeCastro or Mr. Shell?
Mr. Chairman, that was clearly the intention. The intention is to authorize the Airport Commission to utilize funds that are appropriated, in this case, the upcoming town meeting, if the petition article is passed. There's $200,000 the Town Council has said could be used for this purpose, that the Airport Commission could go in, remove the trees, and at its own expense, utilizing its own tree expert. The intent there was to not have multiple contractors out there doing this at different price ranges and have the taxpayer, or even the property owner foot the bill. But the intention was to give the property owner the option of, in effect, of having the Airport Commission come in and remove the trees at the town's expense. That was the intention here. I think, Mr. Shell, am I correct?
Without creating an obligation to do it, that is clearly the intention. And I think, you know, there is an intention here to leave flexibility for the Airport Commission to deal with the facts on the ground as they find them, when they find them, but subject to that, clearly, that's the whole point of this.
Thank you. Correct. Pat, did you have something to say? Were you in at all or not? Apparently not. We lost Pat. All right. Tom, your hand's still up.
No, I'm here.
Pat, there you are. Hi, Pat. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. No, as previously stated by Selectman DeCastro and Shell, this bylaw amendment makes crystal clear that the Airport Commission is authorized to expend funds for these purposes. And this regulation will have to be implemented in accordance with other provisions of general law, such as Chapter 90, Section 40F, which Select Board Member Shell referred to earlier, which does authorize airport commissions and other such empowered agencies to enter upon private property to remove violating trees after they have made a request to the property owner to remove the same. In this particular case, once a request has been made to a property owner to remove the same pursuant to the bylaw, the Airport Commission has the authority to exercise its discretion to go in and perform the removal itself at town expense with appropriated funds. Plain and simple, that's the import of the article.
Yep, thanks, Pat.
Yep.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Anybody else have further comment and/or questions during this public hearing this evening? I see no hands raised. Mr. DeCastro, oh, yes, sir, in the back, please. Can't tell who it is, I'm sorry.
Mr. Stahl.
Mr. Stahl. Thank you, Mike.
So I appreciate Jerry Stahl and George Ryder Road South in the, in the flight path, directly in the flight path. And so I'm not even sure whether this covers my property. I have over 50 trees that could be, you know, in the worst interpretation of this language, they could all be cut down by the Airport Commission in its, in its, in its discretion, I guess, in its absolute discretion. I do appreciate Mike Shell's attempt to make this whole business less onerous than it began when the Airport Commission wanted to impose navigation easements on private ownership. But there's still a lot, I think, a lot of confusion. And so the original language, I was shocked when I got my warrant and read that the original language unamended is still in the warrant. Is that going to be changed at town meeting to the amended? Or...
Yes, the plan would be for the motion that's offered by Selectperson Shell to include the language that's shown on the screen tonight, the amended language.
Can we have that on the screen again? Excuse me for interrupting. So just so everyone knows what we're talking about. Thank you.
I still think it's, there's a lot of ambiguity in this language that gives, could be interpreted as giving the Airport Commission authorities that they do not have under existing Massachusetts law. So for one thing, the original bylaw 100 refers to an Area A. Now, does all of this, is all of this restricted to that Area A? And do we have a map that shows Area A these days? Or do we have to go back to historical documents somehow? I'm not sure if my property is in Area A or not. There's a very strange description of it, 1/20th of the shortest horizontal distance and so on, from some place that's referenced in some map that I've never seen. So, and then it's not clear if this new paragraph is restricted to that Area A. Another thing which isn't clear is that people keep saying, "remove trees." According to the language in the old, the old bylaw, they're talking about trimming what part of the tree that protrudes into the airport space, not cutting down the whole tree. Yet people keep saying, "remove the trees." So are they going to come into my land and cut down to the ground? I mean, they originally talked about not only cutting it down to the ground, but cutting it below the ground and then planting grass seed there in place of your nice tree. Why don't we talk about cutting down the part of the tree, trimming the tree that protrudes into where the airplane is supposed to fly? The airplane is not going to fly down at two feet above ground. But this is all, leaves it all up to the airport, how much of the tree they want to take, and they've already said they'd like to take the whole tree out. So I think this is much more, goes way beyond the original bylaw and goes beyond the attempt to make things easier on residents of Chatham who happen to have trees that grew up where the airport now wants to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl. Sorry I didn't recognize you back there. Mr. Harrison, as I said, had raised and probably would like to respond.
Thank you. Just to allay Mr. Stahl's fears, his property is not one of the properties in question. The removal of trees versus the trimming of trees is going to be up to an arborist. And I think if we can, we'll have to negotiate that with property owners. The Airport Commission doesn't want to have to come back five or 10 years from now and repeat the same thing that we're going through now. And we hope to try to mitigate the situation as best as possible once. And if that means removing some trees and we can negotiate that with the property owner, fine. But the property owner will have to understand that, given this amendment, we will, we may have to come back at a later time and will have permission to do so, to keep those trees under control and out of the approach paths. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Thank you, Huntley. Mr. DeCastro?
Yeah, two things. First of all, we did receive an email from David Bixby dated April 20. I'd like that entered into the record. And any other emails, I haven't seen any others of the hearing. I just wanted some clarification, maybe Terry or Huntley could provide this information. This language applies to, authorizes the removal or lowering of trees which constitute an airport hazard, and that's a defined term. And the bylaw defines airport hazard as any structure or tree which extends into any airport approach zone. And then there's a definition of airport approach zone, which references a map from 1958. Do we have that map? Can we put that up on the screen? I just think it's important for everybody to understand what we're talking about, what's an air, where is the airport approach zone? Is that something that might address a concern that the previous speaker made? I'm sure that says, says very much.
See if you can zoom in, Terry.
I just wanted to see where the airport approach zones are. Maybe Huntley could demonstrate.
I'm not sure if I can stand in front of that and point. Can I do that? Or does that mess things up?
Huntley, see if there's a laser pointer below one of the podiums.
The podium.
Oh, here comes Channel 18 mark.
You're going to get a pointer. We should keep one on the podium. Thank you.
Okay, in the 1958 map, let's start at the runway 24 end, which is Agnes Lane end. The approach zone is defined out to here, and I can't see where that is, but I think it's Queen Anne Road and down to here. If I could see that better, I could tell you. Hang on, I've just got to go look, sorry.
Yeah, it's all right, Huntley, go ahead.
Whoa. I believe this is Queen Anne Road. So that's the approach zone at that end on the 1958 map.
It ends at that triangle, the end of that?
Right here.
Okay.
Yeah. And don't forget, this is a trapezoid that increases in height above the ground. So where the bottom of the trapezoid might be 75 feet above the ground, close to the airport, it might be 200 feet above the ground as you move away from the airport. And so way out here, it's probably 150, 200 feet above the ground level. We have a newer map that we've been dealing with, that hopefully I can bring up in a couple of minutes and show you the difference. This 1958 map also, if you remember, no, probably not very many of you do remember, but in 1958, there was nothing in here. Very few homes existed on Great Hill and also in this area here, the Agnes Lane area, maybe one or two, but I don't think more than that. If anyone knows any different than that, any of the Selectmen who've been here a long time know anything about that?
No.
And how that was developed? Okay, all right. And then down at the other end, this is Route 28 coming through here, and the approach zone here goes out here, and again, it keeps rising. So if you live, and Mr. Stahl said he lived on George Ryder South, that's probably right in this little area here somewhere, and I'm not sure exactly, I'm just guessing, but the approach zone here is way above tree level. So it's, it's something that, the further out you live from the airport, the less you have to worry about with regard to trees on your property. And we will, as I said earlier, we will negotiate with the property owners with regard to trimming or removal, and we also have to look at trees that are below the approach zone but have the possibility of growing into it in the next few years. So those are the kinds of questions we have to ask. Believe me, we're not going to go through and, as was, you know, mentioned as a possibility, and clear cut, down to two feet under. If we do take a tree down, yes, we will restore the land, but that's up to our discussion with each individual property owner in terms of how that happens. Okay?
Okay, Huntley, that was helpful. Map is tough to see, but that was helpful. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I think it would be informative to bring up the new map. Terry, could you bring that up? The one we're dealing with now?
No pressure, Terry.
And I know that Mr. Karen, our consultant from Gale Associates, is on the, on the meeting tonight, and if, if he can correct me something, he may have to correct me on a couple of things, but... Well, let's go on with the meeting, if you can find it. We can go on from there.
Okay. All right, Huntley, thank you. If we can, let me know, Terry, if you get it up. Looks like Mr. Wilson yet again. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question. Are there conditions under which the approach zone might change over time? Are there things that might cause it to get higher, lower, further out, and so forth? If in the master plan, it was suggested that a straight-in approach would be better, if that came to be, would that change any of the dimensions associated with the approach zone? Thank you.
No, to answer your question, the approach zones will stay the same. The category of aircraft that are coming into the airport right now, there's no plan that those will change. And that will mean that the approaches that we're planning, the newer approaches that we're hoping to bring in, the straight-in approaches, which are called LPV approaches with vertical guidance, are much safer than what we have now. And the, and that's one of the reasons why some of the trees need to be removed. But the aircraft that come into the airport now... into the airport now, there will be no change in the approach zone based on the aircraft that come into the airport now. And I don't see, nothing larger can come in. The runway's too short. It's 3,000 feet. Nothing larger can come in. So, I think what we have now is what we're going to see for the foreseeable future. And if electric aircraft come in, they won't need as much space.
And they'll be quieter?
Hopefully quieter, yes.
All right, Huntley, thank you. Thank you. Okay. I see no more hands raised online. Any other questions or comments here from folks that are in attendance? Select Board comments, questions? Mr. Castro, and then...
Yeah, depending upon what Terry comes up with in terms of that other map, are we going to have available, if needed, a town meeting, the ability to project a map or two?
I think that's a great idea.
It might be helpful for the town meeting voters to...
That's a good idea, Dean.
We'll see if we can get a map that's easily, more easily read.
Yeah, perhaps we could even shade the approach zones with color, in color, so that would stand out.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, if I can. And again, I apologize for the technical difficulty here, but the airport layout plans are available on the website with the sheets, the approaches. And as Chairman Harrison indicated, showing both a plan view and a elevation view. So, again, get the sense of what's been identified as protruding into, again, that sloping surface as was described. And then, you can also see it from the plan view or looking down to see that, again, at least on the runway six end in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, that, again, it's not going across the highway.
Let's just make sure we have the available at town meeting.
Yeah. And I'm having, I can get it up, but it's not going to zoom.
No, that's fine.
From the website or this other one.
Thank you.
All right, Terry. All right, thank you, Terry. Summary comments by anybody? Okay. All right, do we have anybody else online? I see no, Mr. Bartlett again? Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could I just ask that the Board confirm what is the plan? There's discussion of a few different approaches. What is the approach that is currently used in the bylaw? And is that proposed to be changed to the master plan that was just being discussed? So, what is actually the law and proposal that will be the law? And is there any idea that you're going to change to what they have negotiated with FAA as the proposed or current approach? Will that change the bylaw or not?
Yeah, I'm recognizing Mr. Harrison. Mr. Harrison?
Mr. Bartlett, the answer simply is no.
Thank you.
So, it's the 1958 plan is the controlling plan for the bylaw?
Okay. All righty then. Any other questions and/or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for your comments.
Mr. Chairman, I move you adjourn the meeting of the Select Board.
Yes, Mr. Castro?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. Good night, Chatham.